Recording.
All right, you're calling hereby called the City of Oregon City Council Meeting. April eleventh, seven P M. Twenty twenty twenty-three to order. Uh, we'll stand and do the flag, so pledge allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today we'll do a roll call for attendance.
Counselor Prophet.
I see her.
Brenda, are you there?
Oh, yes, you guys are breaking up, so I didn't hear a name. Sorry. Yes, I'm here.
Counselor Williams?
Here.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Here.
Counselor Cuevas?
Here.
Counselor Pettigrew? Your mayor Keever?
Here.
So we have everybody here with one vacancy. We'll go on to the next point of our agenda, which is appointment of counselor vacancy candidate interview of Richard Rockwell. Welcome. Good. So what we're gonna do is we have four questions. And we're gonna talk, ask them, ask them. We'll start with Ms. Pettigrew, Cuevas, Counsel Baumgartner, and Isaac Williams. And they'll ask the four questions, and if you wouldn't mind just answering those questions for us.
All right. Please articulate for us why you should be appointed as the new city of Boardman and city councilor.
Well, I would say that being a long-term resident is one thing. Just because you know the town and you know the people in it, whether they're, they've been here for a long time or even new faces. I'm pretty actively involved with the schools, mostly at the high school and junior high level, just because that's the nature, the sports where I coach. I've been a coach at Riverside for, let's see, twenty-five years, but I've been a coach for twenty-seven years. I was a student at all of the schools here, which we didn't have Wendy River back then, but Sam Boardman and the old Columbia Middle School in here again and Riverside. I grew up with a lot of people here or have connections to a lot of the people here in Boardman. I'm still very actively involved, mostly through sports, but I am actively involved in various community service projects whenever I have time to do that when I'm not with my own kids. So.
Thank you.
The Boardman City Council very often deals with controversial or challenging issues where there are strong opinions on all sides. Yet the council has to ultimately speak as one body. Tell us about how you would maintain your individuality while working in a group or team environment.
Well, you know, I understand, you know, this position, you know, you're always gonna deal with controversy just because you are trying to manage a town or run a town, you know, make the best decision possible. You know, that's not always gonna be the case. Not everybody's going to agree with you. But I would certainly hope that I would take the time to educate myself on whatever topic it is and, you know, try and still make the best decision. You know, I said before here several months ago, you know, if you want to make everybody happy, sell ice cream. You know, those are pretty much the only people that are happy all the time is those customers. And so this kind of position, you are definitely going to be a lightning rod for pretty much everything, and you just have to try and be professional and deal with it the best you can.
So when you hear about something that concerns you in the city of Boardman, what steps would you take to see how this, to see that this concern is resolved?
What I think, just having a good rapport with people and having them open up and give them your, give you their concerns or whatever is important, you know, maybe take some notes or even mental notes, or even ask them to come to the city council meeting and address their concern to everybody. You know, one person doesn't make all the decisions here, you know, there's a reason why there's a council and why there's all these steps involved to do anything. And so I think that would probably be my first step is, is, you know, like, hey, take your concerns to us as a whole so that everybody can hear it. You know, one person isn't gonna be able to just fix it like that, you know, so that would be how I would handle that, I would guess.
Thank you. The Boardman City Council must render decisions regarding the implementation of policies and/or programs that may be somewhat difficult. How would you handle a majority decision you disagreed with in your role as both a counselor and as an individual citizen within our community?
Well, I think, you know, outside of just, you know, placing your vote, whether it was for or against something that you didn't agree with. You know, that would be probably the first step. And the second thing is just, you know, making sure that your voice is heard. And that's that. There's plenty of times that I've dealt with situations as a coach, you know, dealing with administration or whatever that I didn't necessarily agree with. And I made my voice heard, and then that's that. I have to accept the decision because that's the nature of my job. And same thing goes with my business, you know, there's certain things that maybe I don't agree with. But I have to follow these rules in order to continue to run my business, and that's just the way it is. And I can be unhappy about it as much as I want, but at the end of the day, you know, if somebody else makes that decision for me, I have to learn to be in a, be able to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks again for being on the hot seat. Thanks again for applying for the candidate empty, for the spot at city council. And at this time, I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Rockwell as our next city council.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, and we'll just, all in favor, say hi. And Brenda, you can say hi or nay, or however you want to do it. So all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? I don't think there is any opposed. It was unanimous.
Thank you.
So at this time, we will do the swearing. Like I said last time, this is probably one of the coolest things I get to do as mayor. So
outside of maybe going to parent out. Yeah. They are now.
Yeah.
So.
All right. I'll read it and then you just. I, Richard Rockwell.
I, Richard Rockwell.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of Oregon.
To the best of my ability, I will faithfully discharge the duties of counselor of the city of Boardman during the, or the, during the period for which I was appointed. So help me God. To the best of my ability, I will faithfully discharge the duties of counselor of the city of Boardman during the period for which I was appointed. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, they'll probably.
How about you? Do you want to picture your family? Who's got the camera? All right, come on up there, buddy. You too. Where's your other son that's got the gear? Oh, they just, they literally just hung over practice. I'll take a picture too, and then you'll do a family.
All right.
Get family picture. Thank you. So I do this all the time. I always forget to welcome everybody to the council. I always, unless I write it down, I didn't do it. So welcome. I appreciate everybody coming. High school students, welcome again. I love it. All right, so we'll go to our next part is approval of minutes, March seventh, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, was pointed out a couple title errors, nothing that changed the information in the minutes, but the board manager should have another A instead of being the city manager. And yeah, so just a couple titles in both sets of minutes.
Okay, so we're gonna have some of it. With corrections.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city council regular meeting from March seventh, twenty twenty-three with correction.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second during discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
We want to give the new counselor a moment to explain.
Well, I wasn't gonna, well, he didn't have a packet, so.
I didn't know if there was one sitting there. I apologize.
I'm looking through it.
No problem.
Yeah. I I'll probably just go with flow because he hasn't read it. Because he didn't get, yeah, we did. So we're on the first one. Now we're gonna be on the second one. March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'm doing through regular, excuse me, special meeting, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, I have a motion. And we have a second. Are you okay? Well, we're not going too fast for you.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay. Any suggestions about that? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have the approval of minutes. So the next thing we'll go on to is our pre-arranged presentation.
Mr. Drago is on his way. If we can change it then a little bit, go into maybe the financial public comment.
I was just gonna look for.
He said he's on it.
So why don't we just go to the financial report?
And Brenda, you have your financial report ending February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. I'd just like to point out that in February, you were speaking of press funding. But the majority of that deposit, you see that in the general fund. We also had in expenses, our quarterly I G A T that we paid out for the building permits and so forth. So that's why that building fund has, you know, almost half a million of expenses that in February. And then, of course, our geo bond projects, another half a million expenses there. Those projects are coming along nicely. We're nearing the end of phase one on some of those and opening up bid for phase two. And so anxious to see those come in. Hopefully, it's all within budget. And then our interest rates are coming up about an order of a percentage point since last month.
That's interest rate on the money, correct?
Yes.
That we're getting.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions in regarding the financials that were presented? I guess I could ask you what, be smart alec and say, what are you spending in the Chris Fund million, but I'm not going to.
All of your projects that you guys defined earlier.
Yes, I was just, yeah, great answer.
Can I ask, when's our budget calendar? I forgot. Is it May? Start in June? Our fiscal year starts July. No, no, when does our first budget meeting? Our first budget meeting is May eleven. Okay, that's okay. You don't have, but we're in domain. Okay, thank you. May sixteenth. Okay.
And I don't know if this is the time to to bring this up. But I think when we're looking at the budget and we're, I'm looking down at the agenda as well for the hiring of the city manager. I don't know if I'm assuming it does need to be a pretty clear plan as far as that transition between the new city manager and then I don't know, I don't know, like Karen, if you're still gonna be assisting with that transition or if it's if it, you know what I mean? Like if it's Karen or if it's you, like I don't.
We've always budgeted a city manager and assistant city manager. We also, when we have, then we've not had one. So that is just cash not spent. I mean, you just have to carry over next year in your budget.
Okay.
And so we anticipate those kind of things.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if that was
Right.
if we were looking at a temporary or what we were doing, but okay.
And we budgeted that way for an assistant city manager for the last two or three years, I would say. Yeah, so that won't change that figure much.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
I heard both May eleventh and May sixteenth for the budget meeting. Could I?
It's May sixteenth.
But go ahead, Brenda.
I just was gonna ask which one it was, or is it both?
No, it's May sixteenth. Off the top of my head, it said May eleventh, but then I checked the calendar and it's a Tuesday, so it's May sixteenth. That is the day of our budget committee meeting, and we have tentatively the following Tuesday schedule. In case we were to need a second day if we didn't complete it on the first day, which has never been needed before, so I don't hope to change that pattern, but it's scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
For the good order, I think we can have the budget calendar sent out tomorrow. So that you all have a copy of the budget calendar as.
Oh, and it makes sense because we've added counselors as we first did that, so I guess.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So May sixteenth, that have to be here?
Yes.
He said with a smile.
Just mark every day.
Oh, I think May sixteen, that's the end of my sock getting to the Yeah, I think I'll be okay that day. That's a Wednesday, Tuesday. Yes. I'm good. Better write that down. Must be there. Thank you, glad I clued into that. All right. Any other questions for our financial reports? All right, we'll do our pre-arranged presentation to Junior, Mr. Junior. Mr. Junior Drago. Come on up, please. So we have a certificate of appreciation presented to Roy Drago Junior for his service on the city council for, you started your second term, second term, and he decided that he wanted to go to the county. We'll check with that. But I'd like to present this with it and congratulate him on his new appointment as well as thank you for everything you've done for the city of Boardman and a small appreciation for everything you've done.
Appreciate that. Thanks. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you like the box?
No.
All right, so we've done that. I think we're at our public comment. Is there anybody who would like to, if we have a public comment? Couple.
So order in which we receive.
All right, Mr. Steven Fuss, you're on.
Good evening. I'm here to follow up on my presentation I gave last month with on some of the stuff Mr. Stoker said. Along the avenues of complaint study mentioned, which he did not name. There are a couple. There, most of them deal with discriminatory housing practices, which I have no group, but they're doing at least to me. That would be through the Oregon Labor and Industry Department and the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. However, if there are people in this room that might be feeling discriminated against by poor view, like those are your options. The other one is price gouging, which I have more group of based on that presentation I gave last month. That's through the Oregon Department of Justice. I emailed the attorney general some of the questions and sort of explained the situation, but have not heard back from them. For the Oregon State Legislature, the bills that we should be looking at are H B twenty-one seventy-one, which luckily is dead on committee. It would have repealed the limits on our rent protections that we currently have in Oregon. The other one is Senate Bill six eleven, which amends those already set protections and lowers the cap from seven percent plus C P I to either a flat eight percent each year or three percent plus the consumer pricing that says C P I, depending on which one's lesser. It also lowers the age requirements from fifteen years to three years. And then to comment on what I would like you guys to do, I would like you guys to hold a town hall, so it's not just me up here talking to you guys, because the Heffner Gazette did do an article on my presentation. I don't know if you saw that. And so people are looking at Boardman and to see what we are doing for them, so they can potentially recreate that in their own towns. Miss Winters, my principal, one of my principals did mention that they are also having a rent crisis in Heffner. So if we can be the leading city in Morrow County to deal with rent protections, we can go to other cities and say, look, here's what we did. You guys could potentially copy that. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. George Shager.
I did, can you go through the process that you guys are doing for the city manager hiring process? I know you went to executive session, so I'm not asking for, I'm just asking what your process is.
We are actually going to present that in our agenda. We're under city manager recruitment. We will be doing it. We will be discussing that. Is there anything else you would like to? Yeah, so I would truly believe that when we get to there and that will answer every question.
That's true.
Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. And we'll go to three dash twenty twenty-three, open escrow account, two K G contractors.
I will defer to Marta, Mrs.
Two K G contractors are the contractors who are working on expanding our city hall for the building department. And just like we did with Lane Christensen and R N Escavating, we need to open an escrow account to hold their retainage if they don't have a bond for that five percent withheld until completion of the job. So I'm just asking for you to approve that so that we can open that escrow account.
Okay. On the, I know that's not, this is, and last, uh, my question, and it might not be, do we have a contract with them on late fees and if they don't meet their deadlines? Yes, we do have. Okay, I figured we did, but.
And that's what that retains is for. So for every month, they send an invoice, or they call it an application for payment. Five percent of that is withheld from every single one of their invoices until they have completed the job. And once we get the okay from our engineer, from our project manager that it's complete, nothing else is out there pending, that's when that five percent retainage is released to them. But House Bill two one four five now says we need to put that money in an interest-bearing account and pay them out, the retainage plus the interest that it's earned. So we're kind of required by law to do this. I still need to open.
All right, I'm open to a motion.
I move to Doc Resolution three twenty twenty-three, a resolution establishing an interest-bearing escrow account for two K G contractors for work on the city hall expansion project.
You have a motion?
Second.
We got a double second, probably Isaac Beer a little bit.
He was louder.
Is there any discussion or questions about this? Having here none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Brenda. Any opposed? We'll move on to Resolution four dash twenty twenty-three, garbage rate increase.
Mr. Mayor, as you recall, we had Mr. Miracle with sanitary disposal come and do a presentation before the council on the rate increase. But we asked him to put it off until later in the year so there would be better budget for it. He did do that. He presented the paperwork and he is on Zoom. Some key questions, but I would recommend that we approve the rate increase.
So we had a long present, I wouldn't say long presentation. We had a presentation given to us about the garbage rate. Do any city councillors have any questions that they would like to ask? And you said it was online, right?
He is online.
It's Kevin?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for Kevin regarding this matter additionally? Having here none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to Doc Resolution four dash two thousand twenty-three, a resolution for increasing the rate structure for solid waste collection in the city of Boardman.
Second that.
Yeah, motion and second. Is there any discussion anybody would like to have about this? If you have any questions, feel free.
I will.
Okay. Having here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move to Resolution five dash twenty twenty-three, interfund loans.
I'll answer it for Marta.
Um, so I was not last, like a year before. Oregon decided that they were gonna help jurisdictions with what they call an unfunded actuarial liability, which means how much is it really, how much is it really gonna cost us to pay out a part of retirement for all of our employees? And we don't have the assets to cover it. That's why they call it an unfunded actuarial liability. They created a program where they were gonna do a state match, which is something they've never done before. We applied for it. We did not get it in the first round. We were put on the waiting list, although at that time they said this is a one-time deal. We don't know if we'll have more money. Well, then more money came in because during COVID, people still kept gambling. So their funds kept increasing, and that's where they were taking the funds from. So they opened it up again, and they gave it to those on the waiting list, and we were eligible. I got the notice, we got moving on it. I mean, it was all like super, super fast. And we did budget for it because we had heard that it was a possibility. And what we had budgeted for and reviewed with the council at that time is to have an interfund loan from the building department to the general fund so that we could participate in this state match. Aside from getting a state match, we're also gonna get a reduction in the percentage that we're paying towards that unfunded actuarial liability, which is almost cutting it in half, and it's effective already at the first. So this is just the official resolution to do that interfund loan, and there's the payment schedule attached as your exhibit A. That came in a separate email. Yeah. So maximum, there would be a ten-year loan, we would make an annual payment back to the building department at a three point seven five per annual interest rate.
So the building fund makes money by doing that.
In the long run, yes.
Yes, in the long run.
Right, but otherwise we'd have to take it out of our.
It's a financially no-brainer to be financially fiscal to be able to take part in this opportunity. Yeah.
Well, they're making the same amount that they would be making, that if you looked on your.
If you left it in the bill.
Yes.
Yes. So we're keeping them whole.
Right, correct. It makes sense to me. To be able to participate with the program, to be able to. Because we're gonna have to pay it back anyway, and that's what we're doing.
Yes, and not only that, when we looked at it a couple of years ago, when they first brought it out. We're pretty lucky for, this sounds a little strange, how lucky you are to only be two thou- two million dollars. Uh, unfunded, but if you check your school district and stuff, you're going to be totally shocked how, how much.
Yeah, they kind of don't talk about that.
Well, they don't, a lot of people just don't know.
Yeah, they don't know.
So, and this is such a bargain for them to want to help. Hey, this, that you need to take advantage when the state's offering to pay. Part of my bill.
And they could reduce our rate at the same time.
Yes, yeah.
All right, I'm interested uh in to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve uh resolution five dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing an interfund transfer.
They have motion a second. Is there any discussion anybody'd like to have, even though I've kind of had one already? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the last one, which is resolution six dash twenty twenty-three person personnel policy.
Yes, we uh sent out in the packet earlier uh a copy of the entire new policy that's been rewrote. We spent quite a bit of time uh updating policy. It's been before our labor attorneys who have given their. Blessing and made sure that we updated the language that needed to be updated. We put it out to you uh for the purposes of hopefully approval and we'll need to resend. Um, the resolution from twenty dash twenty nineteen.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Am I able to ask the city a question at this point, or would that be after a motion?
I'd probably do it in question, so like, and we get a motion to discuss about it. I think that would be the best.
I'll make a motion to approve. Or a motion six dash twenty twenty. I apologize, a second.
Start talking. You got here before you finished the motion. Which will also repeal resolution, right?
Yeah. Yeah, um, the motion would be to um adopt the resolution and repeal resolution twenty twenty-nine.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And Isaac will be the second. All right, now's your question. Thank, go ahead.
Is it possible to give a brief snapshot on what was updated when, when just looking through? I assumed that's what we were, we were moving towards, but I didn't see any highlighted, and I know it's a thick book, so.
So there's several areas that have been updated to conform with uh permanent employment law. Can we give you the specifics?
I, I understand.
Do you remember?
Uh, there's a few. We did update um the teenagers on our vacation.
Vacation.
And um we updated our sick leave language to match what was actually being done in practice. Um, and then there is a big section added again to conform with the law, and I just come to be um the rights about uh. Employees who are nursing um and all the rights that they have, and that one was quite a big section. Um, those were kind of big changes, and everything else was a little bit just more cleanup or just a little bit of cleanup in the wording. Um, again, recommended by our attorneys to make it just cleaner and.
Up to date.
More up to date.
Thank you.
So. How is this different than a contract? Like a union contract. So it's hours of employment, and so uh CBA or a union contract will trump our policy. So um if they have language that's different than our policy, but what we have been doing with our vacation accrual on.
I get the same.
We're trying to get everybody across the whole city the same, and that was why we addressed that. It was kind of a nightmare. Marta had four different. Calculations for your permanent vacation, just because there was, at one point, a union on the city side, a union on the uh. Our own, least far beside, and then we had non-represented employees, and so it was quite a, a, a nightmare. So these are expectations outside of the union contract.
These are our rules that we follow.
Yeah, I understand that. I, 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 I get what you're doing, so. When Trump, as you will, as you work with your union contract and your personnel policy, it kind of got a jive.
Right, it's helpful, but if they, yeah.
So if they don't, then the contract trumps it.
Well, this gives the rest of us. Are why we're doing our job. You know, I mean, the union says they'll do their job, and this is for, for us. All the rest of the employees.
Not for council, but for staff.
Right, first step.
Oh, yeah.
So we did our question. Any other questions? So all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Go ahead. If you, are you an aye or a nay?
I'm an aye, but I can't hit my unmute button very well, so it takes me a minute.
I was waiting for you, actually, Brenda, because I saw you.
I was trying, I'm poking.
All right, thank you. So we'll go to other action items, other business, city manager recruitment.
Mr. Mayor, so uh, I guess I'll, I'll get a little bit more into that. Quite in the manner, but uh uh. Back when you started doing the first recruitment, the council set out some guidelines or rules in which the direction we wanted to follow. Um, part of that was to establish a case scale. You've already done that in a public meeting, which uh has been. Uh, agreed upon by the city council. Uh, the next thing we need to do um is formally adopt uh the timeline for the uh manager search. And I kind of put out uh so a timeline that on three twenty-four, we would open the position and send the advertisement out, which uh. I think you were provided, or if you haven't got the advertisement, you'll have it in your book in the executive session. Um, the position closed today at four P M. Uh, I think we have about sixteen application processing. Um, it says here that we would have an executive section at six P M, but we had to change that for anyone purposely, so we had that. Hopefully tonight, so that you can renew the candidates. Um, if we can't get it done, then we've uh scheduled for uh uh fourteen. For, for thirteen and for fourteen to further review the candidates. I'm hoping we don't have to go to that extent. Um, on the twenty-seventh, we were planning on doing interview panels in the uh morning hours, and then do a meet and greet from five thirty to seven. Or seven thirty on the twenty-seventh, and then on five two, we would like to make a. A selection and, and operate, just operate at a point. So if, if we could approve that timeline, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I would like to move to adopt a timeline for the city management search outlined by the city manager that's so.
A second.
Yeah, motion a second. Are there any questions? Now it's time to ask questions. During that timeline. All right, having hearing none, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Did that answer your questions? Because if it didn't, I'd probably ask, let you ask a question or two.
Did you get a hi from Brenda?
Uh, she didn't say anything.
Hi.
We're at update bank signatories. That would be Marta.
Yes. Um, what changes in our city councillors, um, I need uh for the council to please make the motion to remove. Roy Drago Junior as a signer from our banking accounts, um, and add our newly appointed councillor, uh, Richard Rockwell.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to remove Roy Junior, Roy Drago Junior as a signer from all bank accounts for the city of Fordman. I further move to add Richard Rockwell as a signer, while also retaining ballkeeper Heather Baumgartner, Christina Cuevas. Karen Pettigrew, Brenda Prophet, and Isaac Williams as signers.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Good girl. I have a motion to say, any, any uh question?
Uh, maybe Richard would second that one.
I didn't feel like it was appropriate. Yeah, you're good. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so document signatures, we're, we'll do, we're going to make sure that we do our document signatures. At the end of our council meeting today. So before we go to executive session, we'll make sure we sign all those. Uh, reports, police report.
Um, if you look in your packet, which would be our statistics so far this year, um, not the same numbers, nothing that really jumps out. For statistics, any questions on those?
Yeah, we're just downing officer again, right?
Um, we are, I'm, I'm going to talk about that.
Okay.
So, any, any questions on the statistics? No, I'm told, um, as I'm sure everybody has heard, we did have an officer involved shooting. Um, obviously, it's similar investigation, so I can't give a lot of details. I can't tell you the, the officer is fine. Suspect was transported with minor injuries, um, and is currently injured. Um, it is being investigated by a major crime team. Um, headed by Oregon State Police, um, just like our last one, so they'll, they'll do the, the investigation. And we'll go to the D A to decide whether uh criminal charges will be pressed. Um, and then it'll come back to the agency to do our policy, and you want it. Um, so, any questions on that? One other thing, I just, so. Kind of weird, but I guess the city manager and I. Did go last week, uh, we went to uh Ben for the annual chief's conference. Um, got some really good training down there. Um, officially got presented with our accreditation award from O A C P and O A A. It's a really good conference, uh, some great training.
Chief got an award, didn't he get a promotion or not a promotion?
If you'd like to talk about that, I'll like, don't leave your idea.
If he wasn't going to say it, I thought I, uh, proud of what like, hey, toot your own horn now a little bit. It was pretty cool, at least what you shared with me.
So, uh, yeah, I can touch on that. Um, during the conference, uh, they select their uh. Uh, uh, executive board leadership, um. And I was elected uh by the general membership of the uh association to serve as the vice president at large for the. Oregon Association Chief of Police. Uh, I will tell you, it's a three-year sentence, but probably more like a three-year term. But it comes with sense, but it's a great organization, very proud to uh be a part of it. Um, and represent Eastern Oregon and rule Eastern, at that, so.
I'd just like to add, I think it's pretty, pretty awesome that uh you were chosen. That just means that you uh represent well. You do a lot of things well, and.
Thank you.
Uh, your peers obviously think highly of you, so that, that's pretty, pretty impressive.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, if I could, I'd also just like to take a second and say that I commend and thank the Boardman Police Department, because it sounds like. The um. Impact to the community through the situation that this recently happened was very minimal and well-handled, and so just hold on to everyone that was associated with that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
My street was blocked off, but.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, we had it, it was blocked off for quite a few hours.
Yes, it was.
Doing a very thorough uh.
Search.
And uh, uh, mapping of the, the entire crime scene, so.
Service is appreciated.
Thank you.
Very good.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Building Department report.
You should have a copy of that report in your packet. Jackie, will you do any of that?
No, no, it's like we're acting like we usually do, a little bit slower, it'll start picking up again, but.
I think that the beds would help with their interest rate, that might.
Yeah, I think that's part of it, but no, with that said, we still have fifteen new living units for the year.
I know, and they're building apartments and.
You still have stuff happening, so. Do you have any questions about it?
Thank you, Jackie.
Public Works Department.
Uh, also in your packet and a copy of the Public Works uh report for Martin, uh, and you see they're. Still busy, maybe busy, uh, also got something going, so. Um, and I'll touch a little bit more uh in my report in regards to uh the year reading and how that's going. And progress, your focus.
A new reader, a meter reading program?
Yes, I was here when the first, when the old one started. It's a long time ago.
Uh, we don't have any committee, city manager report.
Uh, and that's it, Brenda, I'm just going to touch you briefly on. Um, we've been working with Hurson Water uh Works to upgrade our water meters to uh. Radio read, so there'll be an automatic read from uh an antenna. Um, and if, if for some reason we have a problem with the antenna, they can drive by instead of having to get out and touch a meter, and it takes our. Our public works guys a couple of days to read the meters, because they have to do them all by hand, so we used our ARPA. Funds to uh fund part of this project. Uh, we were hoping to have this done a year ago. Um, but delays in receiving software and equipment have really. Uh, stonewalls, but uh we've got a couple of uh meetings and have gotten a timeline now. Um, it's changing, I think changed as of yesterday or day before, so um, hopefully we'll have that done. We'll save a couple. Um, at, at least two to three man-hours a, a month from, or man-days. Three man-days a month in reading, we, so they're automatic, so.
I love to ask a question, sure about that. So, how much money do you think that would save the city long-term? I mean, obviously, this is a good thing.
I, I can tell you, it, it, it will, the ARPA funds were American Rescue Act Plan Act funds. That we got, that we could only use for specific items, and uh, uh, the amount that we've invested from those funds. Will quickly make up for uh the, the labor.
So it'll pay for itself very quickly.
And it's a great benefit to the customers because they're um instant reads, and they will notify our utility. If there is one that all, all of a sudden that whack, which could indicate a broken pipe. Or something wrong with the meter, so we could instantly send somebody out instead of waiting. You know, a whole month before we get the read and then be like, oh, I think something's wrong with this person's. Um, so that's another huge benefit.
Maybe, may I ask a question? Is this something that um reads actively, or does it just take its information once a month?
No, actually.
It's a. It updates every two or three minutes.
So that's why that would be good, because you could find something out immediately if there's a problem. There's a lot of cities that do that, like at Hurson, I think it does that, because my daughter.
Because my daughter moved into a new place and there was a leak and they called her and said, you're continuously burning more and more water and that's abnormal for where you live. And they ended up have the, people came out, not the city, but the owners of the land came out and found out that there was a water leak. So.
How would a customer be contacted? Would they just be called or would somebody come in place if there was something that needed immediate attention?
Um, I think we usually try to call first, um, to let them know. I think we called a couple of times because we could send out our guys, but with all the shit work that there is in this area, we don't know what people's worst concerns are, um. And if need be, I mean, if it looked like it was something major, we would probably send out one of our guys. Um, and at minimum, if nobody was home when they went, they'd leave some sort of a door hanger to please contact us so we can let them know.
My assumption is if it was a bad one, they probably shut the water off.
Yes, and probably even, or find a way to contact somebody.
Yeah, especially if it's on your side. Right, because they'd probably shut it off, leave a note and say, hey, you got a water leak on your side. I didn't, that's what I would expect.
Yeah.
Have had those news.
Um, can I? Yes, okay, um, I'm trying to take over from Karen. Um, and, and I can, I can defer to Karen, but, uh, she and the, uh, uh, attended the Department of State University Census Meeting trying to address our, our census numbers. Um, it sounds like in the future we may have some. We, there's a chance working with the county that we can again get this addressed like they did last census where they had to challenge the number, so, um. Hopefully we'll continue working with them. Uh, the big thing I think that's important to highlight is we had a meeting with the city, the city managers from Hermiston, Stanfield, uh, Umatilla Echo and representatives from Stepping Stone in, uh, that community. Um, as you know, uh, well, if you don't know, in July, um, the homeless house bill comes into effect and we have to have a place where we can get them to go to get help and services. If we don't have that in place, then we cannot enforce ordinance to stop them from capping on, on the city hall. So, um, we're working to try to get an ordinance drafted before July first, um, but it was very positive, which would be part of the, uh, inter, interim, IGA. Um, and, uh, we're very fortunate that they were willing to take this in. Because our options aren't very good right now. So, uh, great meeting to attend, um. Uh, last thing I'll report on is we have closed on both sales of the annex buildings, so Good Shepherd has purchased that building uh, and then we named in a, uh, urgent care slash occupational certain uh, program in the annex building, and we've also, uh, completed the sale to the VCPA so they can start their incubator building and bring in some businesses and build, so. Uh, any question for me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to ask a question.
You may.
Um, with the IGA in place, that allows our city to have a, uh, fall safe for the literature there, but does our county have any expectations to build our own?
I would refer to the county commissioner, but she probably couldn't give you an answer at this point. So stay tuned and maybe just see what we can come up with in our county and be thankful that we have our AG, our IGA until then. Yes, I, what I would tell you is, uh, I would tell you that most of the homeless that we deal with is probably one to three people and they're more more or less couch surfers. Uh, we do have a couple that are probably truly homeless. Um, but we're, we're talking five at the max at any given time.
Right.
Um, it's not a big issue for us right now, but if we ignore it, it could be a very big issue, right?
When I was at the mayor's conference, con, the conversation I had with the mayor's about this, because we heard this coming down the road was, uh, who's gonna build it? Got this money out here, who's gonna build it? Where, where are the people gonna go? It, it's kind of like build dreams, you build it and they will come. And so that was the hesitancy with the mayor's on, where are we gonna put it? Uh, Portland's dealing with that now. They passed a, I think they even passed a city bond or levy to be able to help finance that along with the governor's money. So, but that's a whole different level. But I would say that communities around here, where are we gonna get it? Who's gonna build it and who's gonna want the, the, the issues that come with that? And so that was the biggest concern that I had from the mayor's when I was talking to them. So that, that, that's kind of, you wanna do the right thing, but.
I, I think in the plans, the stepping stone and that organization, uh, have picked a spot to build and they're building some of those, uh,
Facilities.
Little shelters, uh, and because they're gonna have a loop group here right away and, uh, you know, they're, they're looking for anybody that would like to come and help fill those and they're already, uh, cut out so that it's like all the fronts are here and all the backs are here, so you put up fronts and you put up backs and so, but they're looking for, and they have, um, I think the more this gets out into the public, there's gonna be a better understanding of what they're trying to do and solve, and I think that, uh, the stepping stones, uh, ladies were there at that meeting and they were very, you know, they're just, I mean, they're, they go up to the, where the old Sears building was and you know, open it up at night so that people can come in and have shelter there or it's warm and dry and stuff, so, uh, they're doing a good job, and so I think if by them taking us in, we cannot just say thanks and not participate. That, I mean, when there's a workday or there's a fundraiser day, Boardman had better be showing up.
Yeah, because they didn't have to let us be part of that organization. Um, I do believe, uh, one of the things that they're facing in this, we've discussed in the meeting is transportation. Um, right now they can't get the local transportation to drop off at that facility. They just simply won't do it. And, um, you know, I think we were hopeful that the, uh, transit facility, uh, with the workforce, uh, uh, transport companies that, that was gonna go between here and Boardman and, and Hermiston was gonna be in place, but it sounds like, uh, that that's kind of been put on hold. The county, uh, was supposed to build a, a transit facility and, and so they run into some issues with NIPA and so, um, I don't think we have given up on that project, but, uh, we really need to find a good place for them to, uh, uh, build this project in transportation for the two county area. It's gonna be very important. In the meantime, uh, for Boardman, I think we're gonna end up relying on our police department to, uh, shuttle folks over to get to those facilities so that they have the services. But we can't do that.
With the loop work? Uh, or is that what you were talking about?
Part of that transportation stuff, but I, it's, the loop is more for medical or, uh, uh, doctor's appointments.
Oh, is that?
That type of thing, that the transportation program that we've been working with is kind of with loop, but it's, uh, through moral counting and it was to get, uh, transient workers from all three communities and just continue to do a loop so that they can keep getting the, the, the people who aren't living in, uh, Boardman to the, the, the port or the people that, uh, live, that work at Hermiston, that live in Boardman are right there, so. Um, I'm hopeful that that project will continue to move forward and, and will address a lot of those needs in moral counting, so, um. Commissioner, did you have anything you wanna say on that? And we're, we're still actively looking for property to, to continue.
So is it gonna be in Boardman or is it gonna be in, it just has to be in the county?
Well, their, their initial site was in Boardman, um, and, uh, it was located, uh, uh, down across from Arcarios, uh, which was really a, a fairly good location for it because that's where most of the people in the port work, so they have a way to get to and from their, their, their place of employment, so, um. Uh, finding two to ten acres for them to build a facility is not gonna be easy to do.
Now, the answer he's answering you is for the transportation, it's not for homes.
That's what I, that's what I was asking, I should have been more clear. So the facility for, I'm assuming you're building a facility for homeless people?
We are not. So this, moral county's not, this is just transportation.
So we, so this is what we're talking about, it's just a transportation.
Transportation.
Not for the facility, that's gonna be no.
Your facilities, I, and you may have seen some in the paper, uh, is, um, power line?
No, it's, if anybody knows where Lind, uh, Mulholland isn't, and it's something about if you go down Old River Road, you can go up the hill, right there.
That's where it's gonna be?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I'm.
I know where that's at.
Yeah, so, um, just to add to that, um, to some of the comments that were said, so, um, when, um, we're talking about individuals that are currently homeless, I do feel like that falls already a lot on law enforcement. Any issues that do arise, it already falls on law enforcement and when we, um, when we have, you know, potential solutions, it is always not in my backyard. And I think that that's where those things happen and, and we have to remember these are our people. Um, and the same thing happened in Hermiston where there is that confusion of where they're gonna be located because they had so many locations that then people in the community were like, no, not there because of this, I'm not here because of this. So, you know, it just sort of ends up being in this random location where it's harder for them, it's gonna be harder for them to access, you know, uh, food or, you know.
Because it is away from everything.
Work and things like that, yeah. So that does happen and they didn't, what they were saying is they didn't have to, like Hermiston didn't have to agree to accept this to be, to say that that's our plan is to be partnering with them, um, but they did agree with us and, and I think Karen is, is right. Um, in order for us to continue to have that partnership, we, we should be active, um, and, and showing that. Um, we definitely want that support, um, because it, it financially, it makes sense with us having the limited number of individuals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, I, I do find it interesting though, what, how Hermiston is, um, tackling it because it isn't just individuals in the city council or the city manager or, um, organizations, but it's also partnering with churches and other community members and coming together to build and create these little pods that, um, is gonna be for the homeless, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for mine.
Councillors, councillor comments.
On which, just the last note of this comment, I know that we've already approved timelines to kind of put things in place for us. If there was ever a time that we could invite them, if they were comfortable or willing to come and do a demonstration or, excuse me, a presentation or be invited in the part of, uh, community events, I think the opportunity for us to show support and have them come here and give words about what they're doing to raise awareness would look very active of us to try to help that and maybe give them more avenues of exposure.
Oh, and, and I don't know what the, the, the process is for the volunteer or whatever, but you know, working at the school, one of the things, one of the requirements to even graduate is you need, was, I think it's twenty hours of community service still. And so I know as seniors get closer to graduation, it's always like I gotta get my twenty hours in because they didn't do anything for the first three and a half years, and so, so I, I think if you start kind of putting that out there, I think there, there will be some kids that will be interested, if that's even a possibility.
Sure, I, I, I would say that that may be a possibility, but they also have insurance issues and.
And they're, they're really looking for.
Run a nail gun and then have a contracting business to have some coverage, but I, I'm not gonna say they won't do that. Anyway, I, yeah, that was it for me, sorry.
And other's con, comments. Okay, I only have one bear comment. I went to a Senator Wyden's town hall meeting. Uh, he went around, uh, in Eastern Oregon and visiting and just last Sunday, he was on TV and he was being interviewed by the, the liberal news. And I say that, that they are liberal and they were really trying to, because he's, he's a Democrat. And they were like, wanting to know what the people's views were in Eastern Oregon. He said, one, the biggest thing that he said is not one community we went to talked about the former president. That wasn't the issue, and I thought that was really interesting that the news thought that that would be a big thing, and he goes, and it been and wrong right, uh, Senator Wyden's own way, uh, you know, in the this, the person he is, he's like, you know, people were talking about the water, no matter where I went, whatever community it was watered. So we gotta figure that out. And he said roads were highly impacted in all the areas he went, and he said, I'm in Eastern Oregon and that's agriculture. He says those were the three things that he said and he says, I gotta get my liberal friends in, 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 uh, in the capital to start figuring that out. And I thought that was really interesting, that water, roads and agriculture were the three top things in every community that he, that he went to. And because all the communities have issues with those things, and I thought that was pretty interesting. Um, so if you missed, uh, Senator Wyden's, uh, presentation, it was a question and answer is pretty interesting. Uh, I think, I mean, see, I went to Merkley's and is, and I think Wyden meets the connects with the communities better than Merkley, which was interesting to me, seeing both of them. You know, they both tried, but Wyden seems to be the guy in this area, so. That was kind of interesting. I don't have anything else as far as mayor comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Or you move it forward, uh, I would, uh, anticipate that we're gonna go run past nine o'clock, which is your normal stop time, so if the council wants to have consensus that, uh, they're gonna go past the normal stop time, that would be good.
I was thinking to go about nine thirty, nine thirty at the latest. Normally you have the nine o'clock time, but, um, I would think, at least go until nine thirty. Anybody have any objections to go until at least nine thirty? There.
Oh, just, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll agree to nine thirty and then address it then. Uh, as far as everything else, uh, we're gonna go into, uh, Boardman City Council will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six six zero two A.
Brenda's trying to wave you down.
Mr. Mayor, is there a Zoom link for the executive session?
There will be for you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Boardman City Council will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six six zero two A, which allows the council to meet an executive session to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Representatives of the news media are designated, staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. The virtual, the public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed during the executive session as permissible executive session. Meetings are not subject to House Bill twenty-five sixty. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of this, at the end of the executive session, we will return in open session. Uh, no decisions are expected to be made. Uh, like I said, Brenda, we will have a Zoom link for you. We'll get that open and, uh, this meeting is adjourned.